I call the Maplewood City Council meeting to order on December thirteenth, two thousand twenty-two. We acknowledge that we are on the traditional land of the Kickapoo, Osage, Miami, Iroquois, and Great Sioux Nation people. Please rise and join me in saying the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the God of the United States.
Madam Clerk, item number four, please.
Councilmember Crossley.
Yeah.
Councilmember Fockingham. Councilmember Homer.
Yeah.
Mayor Knapper.
Here.
Councilmember Page.
Here.
Councilmember Chella.
Here.
Madam Mayor, Congress is present.
Thank you. May I have a motion to excuse counsel person, uh, Fockingham?
So moved.
Second, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Thank you. Madam Clerk, item number six.
Approval of the council agenda.
May I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second, any discussion? Hearing all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. Thank you. Madam Clerk, item number seven.
Public Farm.
At this time, the public is invited to step to the podium if you're in the chamber with us, if you'd like to provide any public comment. Um, and if you are joining us online via Zoom, then please raise your Zoom hand and Mr. Reese will call upon you.
There are no hands.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, item number eight.
Announcement.
We just have one announcement tonight, that tickets are on sale for the tenth, tenth annual, wow, Sweet Tooth Tour. The event is Saturday, January twenty-first, from noon until five P M. And details can be found, about the event can be found at cityofmaplewood.com/fun.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, item number nine.
Approval of the November eighth, twenty twenty-two city council meeting minutes.
May I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second, any discussion? Hearing all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. Thank you. Madam Clerk, item number ten.
Proclamation presentation to school of metaphysics.
Alright, so. Alright, whereas the United States of America has historically been a melting pot where people of all nationalities, religious faiths, and cultures come together as one, and as the strength of our great city rests in the cooperative community of its citizens, and whereas, our only hope of establishing peace among diverse people is through recognizing our connectedness and common dream of peace on earth, and whereas, the first day of a new year typically denotes hopeful expectation and positive resolve in the hearts and minds of our citizens, and whereas, the School of Metaphysics is a worldwide organization founded in our country to promote peace, understanding, and goodwill through teaching that living peacefully begins by thinking peacefully. Has called for a universal hour of peace over the midnight hour of December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-two through January first, two thousand twenty-three. Now therefore, I, Lieutenant Knapper, Mayor of the City of Maplewood, Missouri, do hereby proclaim December thirty-first at eleven-thirty P M local time as the Universal Hour of Peace, when the people of our great country might stand united in common purpose, committing ourselves in thought and action, so peace may move across the face of the earth in the dawning of the new year. Alright, y'all, I'm not going back up there just to say this. So, um, Madam Clerk, item number eleven.
Presentation of certificates to Citizens Academy graduate. Thank you very much. If the graduates would please come up, I would be grateful.
Right on time. Look at you. Yes. Alright, so. In recognition of successful completion of the Maplewood Citizens Academy's six-week curriculum on the structure and operations of all aspects of city government, this certificate is awarded in recognition of your efforts to become a more informed and active citizen in the Maplewood community. Thank you all very much for participating in this program. It's really a big deal. It's an opportunity to give them the time to, um, learn about our city and really. Alright, so, the first certificate is for. Thank you. Alright, do we have a. Okay, alright.
I can take it off.
You know what I'm saying? Awesome. Alright, so now, Mr. Mark Reese.
Thank you.
Thank you. Alright, so now we have. And.
Lauren.
Alright, we have Nancy. Thank you. Nick Homer. Thank you, sir. Have the Tomco. Thank you very much. Alright, Ashley Johnson. Well, she received this. Is she, if, if, if you're joining us via Zoom, Ashley, it's a beautiful certificate. Is she on with us?
I did not see her.
Okay, that's okay. And then Lisa's on. Thank you. Alright, so, picture time, right?
I think so.
Okay.
Well, do you want, I think we're gonna have the rest of our, uh, department heads come up? That's okay.
You have to have you in it. Alright, thank you.
Madam Clerk, item number twelve, please.
Public Defender Presentation by Judge Brandy Miller.
Your Honor, if you would please step to the podium. No, no, no presentation. We, we were trying to be fancy. This is a conversation.
Hello. Hello, I'm honored to be here.
So, Judge Miller, would you please, um, give us your insights and thoughts on the discussion that council is currently having? We just started this discussion, um, about having a public defender in our municipal court.
I think that having a public defender is a necessary aspect of running the court. Um, we actually had court last night. And it was, it was pretty big. We had quite a few people here. I cannot give legal advice. Um, Ms. Graves cannot give legal advice. Oftentimes, they need just information to understand what we're trying to do. A good example I could give you is, yesterday, a gentleman appeared in front of me and he had a ticket for not getting his registration. That ticket has been going on for a while. Um, I have a policy that if they get it registered within the first or second court date, I dismiss that charge. But after that, it's not dismissed. It's just a fine. There are no points. It doesn't affect anybody's driving record. Well, some people don't understand that. I try to explain it to them, but we also have lots of people that we're trying to help as well. Sometimes I send people to the prosecutor, but I think we had a waitlist for the prosecutor last night, and it was something that we could have disposed of pretty quickly, but it was clear that the gentleman didn't understand what the ramifications were. And there was no one for me to send him to to explain it to him. He was getting quite frustrated, and I really was just trying to help. We ended up resolving it, but it took about fifteen to twenty minutes, and I think a, a two-minute conversation with an actual attorney would have really, really helped. Sometimes it's something more serious, and I really need them to talk to an attorney, but they can't afford an attorney. We have a lot of people that come before us that qualify for, you know, aid. So I don't want to send them out somewhere to talk to an attorney. I would love to be able to say, there's an attorney here that you can speak to for a few minutes and see if it's something that you can resolve. Um, I just think it's a necessary aspect. We have a prosecutor who does a great job. She, but her job is to prosecute. We need the opposite end so that the court can be balanced, um, and also so that when people come before us, their lives aren't being ruined. And what I mean by that is a driving while suspended conviction will completely cause you to lose your license. So some people should plead to it. Some people should not. I can't give them that advice. I can't look up what they've got, what their history is. I can't sit there and have a conversation with them about what their driving history is. That's not my position, and so they need someone they can talk to who can advise them. A good example would be if you have a driving while suspended and you've got, say you've got ten, and we do have people that come before us that have quite a few, and they're, they're just not going to get reinstated anytime soon. It's better if they pled right away, because they're still gonna be suspended for the next year. That way it runs at the same time. A lot of times they're asking for continuances, so we might continue it out six months. I give quite a bit of time to get, help them get in order, but now they're pleading six months later, and so they really lose an additional six months. That's just not beneficial to them. Whereas some people are like, I'll just plead, I've got time in, can I, can I do that? But they're actually eligible to get reinstated. So that's the worst idea, but I can't advise them on that. Ms. Graves can't advise them on that. So having someone here that could talk with them about those ramifications and help them. Another thing that happens is sometimes we do have trials, and it's very clear that they're, they don't know what they're supposed to be doing, um, how to present evidence. They might even have witnesses. They don't know what to do. I can't, I can't do that for them. So just having someone that they can talk to about that. Sometimes we have trials unnecessarily. A good example of that would be, um, I've had people say, I, I was there, but I wasn't stealing. So then we talk about the fact that switching a price tag is considered stealing. Um, but they don't understand that necessarily. So we're having a whole trial over whether or not that's stealing. That, that's a legal issue. If they had someone to talk to that could explain, hey, this is what you're looking at, then they would realize that the offer that was on the table, which was for littering or something like that, is really better for them than having a trial, because unfortunately the facts do not lend themselves to me finding them not guilty in that particular situation. Sometimes the facts would lend to that, but I again can't advise them of that. So they're pleading on something that they shouldn't be. So I, I really do think that there are so many benefits from having someone available um, for these people to talk to, having them here. We don't have court a lot. So I think that it's something that would be sustainable. In my experience, there are a lot of jurisdictions that have one that gets paid a hundred an hour, or something like that. Talking about a few hours, once, twice a month, maybe. Um, we could even do a docket that the public defender is there for just that docket. It doesn't have to be every single docket. Um, another thing that we have, we have a lot of people that come before us that have mental health issues. I can't be their advocate, per se. We do try to get them in touch with people, um, but it would be a lot easier if they had someone that could look into certain things for them. Um, we just can't do that. So, or file something, you know, something as simple as, did you complete your community service? And how do you submit that to the court ahead of time? How do you submit your proof of insurance ahead of time? Things like that. So I really do think it would be beneficial. I don't see any drawbacks to it. Um, so that's all I have.
Do you have any questions?
Yeah, I have one. Judge Miller, could you tell us how often you have trials and are the majority of those, per se, representing themselves?
Yes, we have trials about once a month, sometimes every other month, and I think I've had twice where there was an attorney. We don't have a lot of trials. We actually work out most of our cases, which I'm very proud of, but I think we've had, would you say, five or six, maybe?
Yeah.
Five or six, and out of those, two were an attorney and the rest were all pro se.
Councilwoman McCrory, you had a question, um, that you submitted for us to discuss during a work session, and do you recall that?
Yeah, I think I was interested in opportunities for us to do some like cost sharing or avoid duplication, um, because at one point we were.
It wasn't that one. I'm sorry to interrupt you. It was, it was the one where we were, you were, um, you directed us to the commission, the Ferguson, the Ferguson Commission Report, and you said within the report, there was a, um, view of impropriety when you had someone that was serving as a prosecutor in one municipality and then a judge in another. And so do you recall that question? Okay.
I'm pulling up right now.
Based on reading of page thirty-four, the Ferguson Commission, I'm thinking this would be a separate contract with a different, oh, sorry, uh.
I think it's the next question under a mini-court, so.
Yeah. A critical part of the report is the perception of a conflict of interest among municipal judges who are serving in similar roles within the county. Since we are already considering amending the section of the charter, can we amend the charter to include explicit prohibition of candidates for municipal judge? And I think the discussion we had was that would be limiting in who, finding an attorney was sort of where we landed, but I know Sarah wasn't present for that.
I'd love to speak to that because I actually do that. Um, so as you can imagine, this does not pay a lot. Um, which is fine. I, I know I do it because I enjoy the work. I assume most of my counterparts do it for the same reason. So I think, I think that you have to be careful, yes, because it can create an impropriety. It can look like that. But when people appear in front of me, and I believe that my reputation precedes me, that I'm kind, I am considerate, I am respectful, and that's what they really care about. I think what has happened in the past in many municipalities is the judge is nasty, mean, disrespectful to people, and then now you go to a different municipality, because there are so many in St. Louis County, and now he's the prosecutor, he or she is the prosecutor. And you're like, oh, I'm in trouble, right? Um, so my experience working both as a defense attorney, a prosecutor, and a judge, I think makes me well-rounded. So I do think that it's important. However, I do think that you have to look at the individual and their reputation and, and how they handle and manage individuals, because it's all about how we treat people. Everybody that comes before me, yes, sir, yes, ma'am. I try to give them respect because, one, they deserve it, but also because this is, this is for some people, the only experience they will ever have with a judicial system. And you have an impact on their lives, and you have to take that seriously. And so I, I do think that it can be limiting if you say no municipalities, but if they have too many, I think on the, that side, it's, it's a problem as well, because then they're being seen everywhere and how effective really are they?
And thank you, um, for bringing up that question, and thank you for your comments to that. And I, and I definitely um, would not have, you know, been supportive of your appointment if you weren't all of the things that you just listed, right? I think the challenge is that our charter is very much not about, who is it currently? Who will it be in ten, twenty, thirty years? Um, and I think it's an interesting question, right, of we do live in such a fragmented county and region that this has happened, and it has resulted in bad treatment of people. And so if we have an opportunity with going through the process of exploring a charter amendment, which is a pretty robust, lengthy process, why not clean up as much as we can while we've got the opportunity? Um, so I'm just asking that the council continue to consider that as we're looking into this, um, and I do very much appreciate your comments about the public defender, and that's clarified a lot of things for me. Um, as including your cost and time and all, all that, and all the, the pros that I'm very glad to hear. So thank you.
Thank you.
Can you tell us what you think would be, or, or I guess your experience or what you know regarding municipal court hourly rate? Would you, would you tell us, like, what's the range in that?
Yes. So it depends. Um, I, I get paid approximately a hundred an hour as a prosecutor. I know some that charge quite a bit more. Um, it depends. A lot of times it's whether or not they are the attorney for the city as well, and then it's included in that contract. Um, I know some that have charged fifty an hour. Some it's per night, some it's per month. It, it just really depends. Um, usually because we have more than one municipality, it's easier to do that. So I have certain municipalities that just, they don't have a lot of funds. So I don't charge very much, but I can do that because I'm allowed to work in other municipalities. If I wasn't, then I would have to turn that down, because it just wouldn't be financially feasible. So around, I would say between fifty and probably one fifty an hour at most, or if you're looking at it being monthly, then it would be just depend contingent on how many hours you think that they're gonna be doing per court night.
And then I guess what's the, what's the average hour, hours that you all have for municipal court each, each time you have court?
So last night was long. We were here till about seven thirty, but on average, maybe two hours. Yeah, we're usually start between four thirty and five, depending on the type of docket we're doing, and we're usually out by six, six thirty. And we handle quite a few people in that, in that time. We kind of run pretty smoothly, usually.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any additional questions? Thank you so much, Judge Miller.
Thank you all for having me. Have a great night.
You too. Madam Clerk, item number thirteen.
Presentation by Plan and Zoning Chair Kevin Sullivan and Commissioner Colin Bassett on creating and sustaining affordable housing.
Uh, council commissioner Bassett had a conflict, so he won't be able to join us this evening, but I do appreciate, um, Chair Sullivan joining us this evening. Uh, I, I just will say again, thank you, because I know ordinarily we wait for you to, you, you have a schedule of when you will be here, and you are not on the schedule. So so thank you so much for taking time out of your evening, um, to present to us. And I would, before you begin, I just want to let council know how this started. Um, I had a meeting with Commissioner Bassett, and we were talking about affordable housing, and, um, he found some information that our Chair Sullivan is going to speak to us about, and then also it's included in that report. Um, so I am excited to hear from you, um, excited to learn, uh, that we actually. Let me back up and just say this. So for the, the first year, uh, that I have been there, I have been trying to figure out how do we get a affordable housing here in our city. And I would say to myself and to others, it seems like what we're seeing right now with housing is twenty years in the making. Um, meaning I, I just thought good, good grief, this is like a huge wave that's coming, and it has invited gentrification into Maplewood, and I don't know how to stop it. Um, so Commissioner Bassett found a land use strategic plan that pretty, that was created twenty years ago, so my gut was right, and, um, basically told me that the purpose of that strategic plan was to usher in gentrification. Those words are not used, um, but basically that plan says, you know, they wanted our community members at that time wanted Maplewood to be a city that was like a bedroom community, but it was wealthy. Um, I, I do not fault our community members for wanting that, because there are community members that have been here for forty years and have seen our city go through very, very hard times. So I understand what the mindset was, uh, when this strategic plan was created. However, we do have an evolution of thought in our community, and because of that, um, we are looking to at least invite mixed income and also ensure that the community members that have been here for forty years can remain here, and they're not priced out because of property taxes. And also, um, the community members that haven't been here for forty years, but maybe they've been here for twenty years, can afford to stay here as well. So with all that being said, um, that's why Mr. Sullivan's here, so I'll let you take it away. Thank you.
Oh, thank you, Mayor Knapper. I think you summarized that, or got the summary going very well. Um, and, uh, thanks to the rest of the council, uh, for giving me the opportunity to, uh, update all of you on, uh, the efforts that the commission has decided to take to, uh, both maintain and sustain affordable housing and to create more affordable housing opportunities, uh, in Maplewood. As the council is probably fully aware, um, the twenty twenty-one community survey showed that about seventy-five percent of the people who responded to that survey, uh, were concerned about the rising cost of housing, and that it was a barrier to new residents moving into Maplewood and existing residents being able to stay in Maplewood. Likewise, the more recent twenty twenty-two, uh, Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion Report, uh, further highlighted the need for addressing the issue of affordable housing. So as a commission, we've made the decision to make the issue of affordability of housing a, a priority. Um, I will read verbatim, uh, Commissioner Bassett's two-page report that he had shared with the mayor and, uh, which is part of the agenda packet, and, uh, which speaks very eloquently for itself. Um, but I would like to highlight and just summarize some key points, uh, both that can be found in that report and that have been under discussion. Um, really, uh, as the mayor mentioned, the comprehensive plan from, I think it might be thirty years ago, it might be a nineteen ninety comprehensive plan when things were very different, uh, prioritized, uh, raising property values through planning and zoning regulations and other regular, and other regulations. And while this might increase uh, property values when it's paired with, uh, high demand and low supply like we have in a fully developed city such as Maplewood, uh, lower-income residents, residents of color, and older residents can be disproportionately impacted by rising purchase prices, higher rents, and higher real estate, uh, taxes. This means that residents can't move into Maplewood if they want to, or it can mean that they can't remain in Maplewood. So, uh, and as further detail, and if you're interested in it, uh, and I think it's referenced in Commissioner Bassett's report, I would encourage people to review the twenty twenty-one St. Louis Affordable Housing Report Card. That's at affordableSTL.com. Uh, that provides a lot of information, data, and strategies with respect to, uh, both sustaining and creating, uh, affordable housing. So, um, as I kind of already said, the, uh, the goal for affordable housing is really twofold. We have what's sustaining and stabilizing current affordable housing stock, and two, uh, creating more affordable housing for residents. With respect to sustaining affordable housing, uh, the risk is that you can have developers who will come in by existing affordable housing and then replace it with higher-cost housing. You know, for example, you could have someone buy a, uh, apartment complex, renovate it, raise the rent, and displace, uh, tenants because they're getting higher, uh, rent because of the renovations. Likewise, you could have, uh, someone buy a, you know, what would be an affordable thousand-foot square house, tear it down and replace it with a three thousand-square-foot square house, which, uh, lower income or even middle-income people might not be able, uh, to afford. On the creation side, uh, there's also the risk that with new developments, there's nothing in place to, uh, incentivize that new developments, uh, particularly apartment complexes, would include, uh, units that would be affordable to both lower-income and middle-income people. So, um, as a commission, over the past several months, at meetings and at working sessions we've been having, uh, we've discussed various recommendations and priorities. Um, on the sustaining the current, the current affordable housing side, um, we've had. um, we've had commissioners who have expressed interest in, uh, strengthening teardown regulations and limiting the size of new houses by ratio or by square footage to homes, uh, you know, nearby and in the area. Um, that would control rising prices and likewise hopefully control real estate taxes. Um, we've discussed, uh, providing tenant, uh, protections, possibly in the form of a right to return after redevelopment, uh, displacement payments, rent differential compensation while the redevelopment is occurring. And, uh, possibly affordability agreements with developers. Uh, we've also discussed, uh, encouraging homeownership and what's known as naturally occurring affordable housing. On the creation of more affordable housing side, uh, commissioners have raised priorities as revising existing uh, zoning regulations to allow for higher events, higher density development and therefore providing, uh, more affordable housing options for people. Uh, another thing discussed is incentivizing the creation of more affordable housing. Um, there are several examples and we have, uh, example ordinances and are keep getting more, keep gathering more information. Uh, one incentive is allowing more units to be included in a development so long as there is a percentage of affordable housing that would be included in that development. Or there can be other, uh, incentives provided to developers to do that. And, uh, there is also the discussion of, uh, allowing more get mixed use and mixed income development as well. Um, commissioners have also discussed, we need to come up with a definition of what affordable housing is, uh, which is very important. And also developing metrics and collecting data on affordable housing in the city. And finally, uh, we've also discussed revising the existing code, uh, to address accessibility with respect to housing. So, uh, just to conclude, I can give an kind of an overview of, uh, of what we've done and, and what our activities have been with respect to affordable housing the past several months. First, um, we worked with the ordinance review committee to, uh, provide a recommendation with respect to the accessory dwelling units ordinance, which the, the council passed. We're excited to report that I think the first, uh, petition for such a unit is going to be on an agenda in January before us. Hopefully we'll see much more. Uh, the commission further agreed that we were going to have a standing agenda item for every meeting, which would discuss ideas, readings, research, uh, with respect to housing affordability, access and stabilization. Uh, the commission is also undertaking a complete review of the comprehensive or master plan, uh, from the nineteen nineties, um, which certainly needs to be updated and or rewritten entirely. Um, this is going to be a long-term project, um, a lot of work, but we're willing to do it. And, uh, what we're currently doing now is similar to what we've done with, uh, affordable housing regulations and what's due is to come up with kind of a, a core group and a consensus of, you know, priorities and goals, uh, to achieve at the outset of this review. Um, so in, to accomplish these goals, uh, we further agreed to hold working sessions, um, when we might not have petitions or applications on our regular meeting agenda. And we've also, uh, agreed to meet up for two hours at each scheduled meeting, um, so that we would have time to address both the important issues of housing affordability and the review of the comprehensive plan. Um, at the last, uh, working session in December, we discussed along with, um, members of the ordinance review committee who were present, including, uh, councilperson Phillips and, uh, and, and others, um, what the priorities would be and what the review committee could do to be able to assist the, the commission in these efforts. And as a first step, we asked the review committee, the ordinance review committee to, uh, collect and find data specifically relating to the tearing down of affordable housing and the replacement with larger, um, more expensive, unaffordable units. And this would include, um, the possible impact, impact on tax burden on residents, negative impacts on affordability and, uh, disaggregated data by race, by gender and by age. And, uh, we believe that this data will help justify our work on recommending certain changes specifically related to teardowns and development. That's my report thus far, but I'd be, uh, more than happy to answer any questions or take back any suggestions that you might have.
Thank you so much. Um, the, I don't, I don't have a question or a suggestion, but a request.
Yes.
That, um, the commission determines if they need to have funding, how much that funding would be, uh, and then be prepared to make that request because we're, we're going into budget season now. So if you need money, I'd like for y'all to have it.
And, and we have discussed, uh, that initially and what, uh, the cost specifically with respect to the, uh, the review and update of the comprehensive plan, uh, you know, what that would entail and, and what the cost might be.
Thank you.
Um, I know the city of St. Louis at one point had started an ordinance about teardowns because they were seeing a lot of, um, like four-unit buildings being torn down and replaced with single-family housing. Um, I don't know, I feel like I saw that about a year ago and haven't heard anything else about it, but there's a post this fetch headline out there somewhere, uh, that might be useful. Um, but I just, I really want to say thank you because this is very robust and extensive and honestly phenomenal work, um, from the commission. So Kevin, thank you and the rest of the group too.
Okay. Thank you very much. And we'll take a look at it. Like I said, we're, uh, gathering probably too much information, but, uh, but always looking for more.
Additional questions, comments? All right. Thank you all. Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Clerk, item number fourteen.
A resolution of the City Council of the City of Maplewood, Missouri authorizing the city manager to accept the bid of archway industrial coating in the amount of twelve thousand eight hundred eighty dollars for resurfacing the concession floor at the Maplewood Family Aquatic Center.
May I have a motion?
So moved.
Second, any discussion? Hearing none, Madam Clerk, roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Crossley.
Yes.
Councilmember Homa.
Yes.
Mayor Knapper.
Yes.
Councilmember Page.
Yes.
And Councilmember Philip.
Yes.
Resolution twenty-two dash eighty is approved.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, item number fifteen.
Resolution of the City Council of the City of Maplewood, Missouri to accept the bid of that Tuck Pointing Incorporated in the amount of twenty-four thousand eight hundred sixty dollars for masonry openings and renovated areas of the city hall building.
May I have a motion?
So moved.
Second, any discussion? Hearing none, Madam Clerk, roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Homa.
Yes.
Mayor Knapper.
Yes.
Councilmember Page.
Yes.
Councilmember Philip.
Yes.
Councilmember Crossley.
Yes.
Resolution twenty-two dash eighty-one is approved.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, item number sixteen.
A resolution of the City Council of the City of Maplewood, Missouri opposing fifteen dash B S R thirty dash two hundred point zero one five library certification requirement for the protection of minors submitted by the Missouri Secretary of State.
May I have a motion?
So moved.
Second, any discussion? I, I just ask that, um, if, if anyone that is in our chambers or, or participating via Zoom has not had an opportunity to look at this resolution and to look at what the, um, Missouri Secretary of State is trying to do regarding libraries, please look into that. And also there is still, is, there's still time to make comment. There's still time to make comment on this rule change that the Secretary of State is trying to, uh, impose upon libraries, which is basically, he's, he's trying to tell our librarians what to have on their shelves. And our librarians are, um, trained, they have degrees, they know what needs to be on our shelves. And the Secretary of State needs to mind the business that pays him and this isn't it. So with, with that being said, please look at the resolution, please make sure that you comment um, and let the Secretary of State know and, and the committee that is looking into this, let them know that this is just absurd. Any additional discussion? All right. Madam Clerk, roll call vote, please.
Mayor Knapper.
Yes.
Councilmember Page.
Yes.
Councilmember Philip.
Yes.
Councilmember Crossley.
Yes.
Councilmember Homa.
Yes.
Resolution twenty-two dash eighty-two is approved.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, item number seventeen.
Bill sixty-two oh seven, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Maplewood, Missouri authorizing Missouri American Water Company to install a fire hydrant at or near the southeast corner of twenty-nine fourteen Bartel Avenue. Sun in station phase two.
That was the first reading. May I have a motion?
Motion to approve the ordinance.
Second, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Then motion carries. Thank you. Madam Clerk, second reading, please.
Bill sixty-two oh seven, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Maplewood, Missouri authorizing Missouri American Water Company to install a fire hydrant at or near the southeast corner of twenty-nine fourteen Bartel Avenue, sun in station phase two.
May I have a motion?
Motion to approve the ordinance.
Second, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Then motion carries. Thank you. The third and final reading will take place at the next council meeting. Madam Clerk, item number eighteen.
Bill sixty-two oh eight, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Maplewood, Missouri amending chapter fourteen businesses and business regulations, article two occupational licensing generally, division one generally, section fourteen dash twenty-one fee to modify the required annual business license fee payments for automobile dealership new and used.
That was the first reading. May I have a motion?
Motion to approve the ordinance.
Second, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Then motion carries. Madam Clerk, second reading, please.
Bill sixty-two oh eight, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Maplewood, Missouri amending chapter fourteen businesses and business regulations, article two occupational licensing generally, division one generally, section fourteen dash twenty-one fee to modify the required annual business license fee payment for automobile dealership new and used.
May I have a motion?
Motion to approve the ordinance.
Second, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Thank you. The third and final reading will take place at the next council meeting. Madam Clerk, item number nineteen.
Bill sixty-two oh nine, an ordinance calling and providing for the holding of an election in the city of Maplewood, Missouri on April fourth, twenty twenty-three for the purpose of submitting to the qualified voters of the city of Maplewood the question of increasing the annual license fee for automobile dealership new and used.
That was the first reading. May I have a motion?
Motion to approve the ordinance.
Second, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Thank you. Madam Clerk, item number, excuse me, second reading, please.
Bill sixty-two oh nine, an ordinance calling and providing for the holding of an election in the city of Maplewood, Missouri on April fourth, twenty twenty-three for the purpose of submitting to the qualified voters of the city of Maplewood the question of increasing the annual license fee for automobile dealership new and used.
May I have a motion?
Motion to approve the ordinance.
Second, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. The third and final reading will take place at the next council meeting. Madam Clerk, item number twenty.
Bill fifty-two ten, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Maplewood, Missouri amending chapter fourteen businesses and business regulations, article nine peddler, solicitors and mobile food vendors relating to mobile food vendors.
That was the first reading. May I have a motion?
Motion to approve the ordinance.
Second, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Madam Clerk, second reading, please.
Bill sixty-two ten, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Maplewood, Missouri amending chapter fourteen businesses and business regulations, article nine peddler, solicitors and mobile food vendors relating to mobile food vendor.
May I have a motion?
Motion to approve the ordinance.
Second, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. The third and final reading will take place at the next council meeting. Madam Clerk, how you doing?
Good.
Okay. All right, Madam Clerk, item number twenty-one.
Bill sixty-two eleven, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Maplewood, Missouri amending chapter thirty-six parks and recreation, article three park rules, division two prohibited conduct, section thirty-six dash eighty-seven selling, advertising, posting signs relating to mobile food vendor.
That was the first reading. May I have a motion?
Motion to approve the ordinance.
Second, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Madam Clerk, second reading, please.
Bill sixty-two eleven, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Maplewood, Missouri amending chapter thirty-six parks and recreation, article three park rules, division two prohibited conduct, section thirty-six dash eighty-seven selling, advertising, posting signs relating to mobile food vendor.
May I have a motion?
Motion to approve the ordinance.
Second, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Thank you. The third and final reading will take place at the next council meeting. Madam Clerk, item number twenty-two.
Bill sixty-two twelve, an ordinance calling and providing for the holding of an election in the city of Maplewood, Missouri on April fourth, twenty twenty-three for the purpose of submitting to the qualified voters of the city of Maplewood the question of charging mobile food vendors a fee for the issuance of a public use permit, special use permit and festival use permit to operate in the city of Maplewood and directing the city clerk to notify the responsible election authorities of this election.
That was the first reading. May I have a motion?
Motion to approve the ordinance.
Second, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Madam Clerk, second reading, please.
Bill sixty-two twelve, an ordinance calling and providing for the holding of an election in the city of Maplewood, Missouri on April fourth, twenty twenty-three for the purpose of submitting to the qualified voters of the city of Maplewood the question of charging mobile food vendors a fee for the issuance of a public use permit, special use permit and festival use permit to operate in the city of Maplewood and directing the city clerk to notify the responsible election authorities of this election.
May I have a motion?
Motion to approve the ordinance.
Second, all the, excuse me, in discussion. Jumping ahead, forgive me. All right, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Thank you. The third and final reading will take place at the next council meeting. Madam Clerk, item number twenty-three.
Mixed income neighborhoods overlay ordinance discussion.
Uh, all right, so, uh, my colleagues have had an opportunity to look at the memo that I provided. Uh, this is simply for you all to take a look at this and, um, possibly think about any additional ideas you may have. Uh, I just wanted to bring this to your attention that there are other cities that are creating ordinances like this to ensure that when development is taking place in their cities or municipalities, they are, um, essentially forcing developers to set aside, uh, some housing for folks that would be affordable. And they're looking at the, um, average median income, AMI. So that's really it. Any, any questions?
I have a question. Um, Mr. Reese, is it okay if I ask Mr. Traxler?
Sure. Anthony was here and I expected he might get some question marks.
Um, uh, Mr. Traxler, since this is a zoning question, is an overlay district, is that something that would need to go before the voters or is that something that city council can approve as a change in zoning?
I honestly, I think it's an interesting concept. I've looked it over from the, the zoning standpoint, it would just go before city council. I would want to double check with legal counsel about the income eligibility. I don't have experience with that. But, um, I think the overall concept is very interesting and exciting. I just, I don't, I can't give you a good answer on the income portion, but definitely the zoning portion could just be handled by the city council as would be a simple overlay district. We even have one right now on the books, the green Greenwood Overlay District, and that was done just by council only.
Thanks for that clarification.
All right, item number twenty-four, Madam Clerk.
Old business ordinance. Old Business Ordinance Review Committee.
I may be the only one with a report, um and most of my thunder was stolen by um uh Mr. Sullivan. So um as he indicated, we uh my uh myself and uh Matt Correll, who has joined our committee, the Zoning Ordinance Review Committee, um met with planning and zoning at their last meeting, and we are continuing to move forward with the work. Um and in this case, we are being uh more directed by the uh zoning commission. So um we have a a good partnership moving forward. We continue, we will continue our work into the new year. And um right now, I'm just double checking with the current members of the committee to see who wants to continue into the new year um with that work, so. Um I plan on when my term ends on City Council, um I'll be turning over the reins of that committee to uh Mr. Correll after he is duly sworn in in February.
Madam Clerk, item number twenty-five.
Council Communication.
Madam Clerk, item number twenty-six.
Mayor's Report.
Thank you. Uh so I want to let council and our community know that um I am I I learned about a program. Uh it's a pilot program that's taking place in West Denver, Colorado, and that program is focused on accessory dwelling units and providing financing to homeowners that would like to create that. Uh but the contingency on that financing is you have to rent the A D U to someone that does not exceed eighty percent of the A M I. And so I'd like to see A D Us become um more accessible to low to moderate income homeowners that would like to assist other families. And so I'm just letting council know that's what I'm working on right now. Um looking into that pilot program and also pitching it to local banks uh in the Saint Louis region. So if I get traction on that, which I am determined to get traction on that, then uh I will come back to your own report on that. Uh the next thing I'd like to let you all know is that I have spoken with Mr. Reese of um he is currently working on a social media uh policy, and I have asked for him to include in that policy um some guidelines on communication for council. So for example, when we pass an ordinance that is one of a kind in the region, I would like for uh communication to to be sent out about that. So be it a press release or it on our website or emails to community members, just to let them know what council is doing. Um and so I believe he may speak on that a bit more, so I'll just stop there. But just to let you know, I provided him with uh three things that I would like to see regarding communication and just ask that he include that in his policy that he's working on. And finally, happy holidays. Uh you know, it is, it is crazy sweater season, so I hope that you all have some to wear. I'm wearing mine. It's not crazy, though. Um and that's it. Thank you.
Madam Clerk, item number twenty-seven.
The City Attorney's Report.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, item number twenty-eight.
City Manager's Report.
Thank you. Mayor and Council, I have a rather lengthy report tonight, so um I'll get to it. Um so Welcome Maplewood is our Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion Plan. And I wanted to give an update on that. We issued our set of Welcome Maplewood uh D E I actions since twenty twenty-one on social media, the website, and LinkedIn about a month ago. And our next step is the five-year plan. Uh here is the update on that. We're working hard as a team with our consultants. Um we expect to unveil our five-year plan in March or April before City Council. It was pushed back a little to allow us more time to work as a team on our initiatives. I'm very pleased how we've come together as a staff and collaborated on this important groundbreaking effort. The plan will be bold but doable over the course of five years. So that's the update on the Welcome Maplewood Five-Year Plan. Uh traffic calming study findings, kind of a preview here. I expect in January or February uh that we uh plan to unveil C V B's recommendations at a City Council meeting. Um in uh twenty twenty, the current year, in the current year, we collected a lot of data. We held open houses too with the public, and we've had staff tours of the city. And soon it's going to be time to put a stake in the ground and say this is what we can do. So it will be a set of findings that becomes a multi-year plan as well. So we'll look forward to that uh early next year. Uh we have a budget town hall that's scheduled for Wednesday, January eleventh. Um that will be from six to eight P M here at City Hall and Council Chambers. There's a Zoom option as well. Uh we look forward to that and uh everyone's participation. And then um like we did last year, we'll have a strategic budget priority session uh to get uh some City Council priorities, and that's going to be Tuesday, February twenty-eighth from six to seven thirty P M. That will be a work session before the council meeting. And there'll be a Zoom option, of course, um like we always do. Um so that's uh kicking off the budget. Um early next year, uh I'll I'll prepare a memo for the full uh budget calendar for your review. Um also on the calendar, which will begin to highlight this on social media and the website, there's a Parks Master Plan Open House. This is scheduled for Thursday, January twenty-sixth from five to seven P M. That's at City Hall Council Chambers, a Parks Master Plan Open House, a wonderful opportunity to weigh in on the future of our parks. Um next item I'd like to talk about, uh the mayor alluded to, is our communication strategy. Um since I've been here and really in in this year, in twenty twenty-two, we made a concerted effort to enhance our communication strategy, which includes social media, social media, email blast, the website, calendar listings, and use of the Maple Leaf now four times per year. In twenty twenty-three, we want to be the more strategic, consistent, and comprehensive with our communications efforts, with an increased emphasis on City Council activity, key city initiatives and partnerships, and we have many, press opportunities, and LinkedIn utilization, so that we showcase the City of Maplewood and key events to our residents, residents, businesses, and the greater community. So a little specifics here. So when the City Council makes an ordinance or passes a resolution that is unique in the Saint Louis region or in Missouri or addresses an issue that affects the Maplewood community, we will share this on social media, the city's website, and perhaps in a press release or in the Maple Leaf, depending on the scope and timing of the issue. Uh events hosted by the mayor, city council, or the city manager will be published on social media, the website, and the city calendar. Uh these events will be sent to residents via email and included in the Maple Leaf if the timing of the event aligns with the publisher publishing of when the Maple Leaf uh goes out. So um that's kind of our plan for twenty twenty-three, and I welcome ideas from council members on all of these efforts. If you've got ideas, how to improve them, uh very open. Uh so that's our communication strategy. Um the next item I want to give you an update on uh in collaboration with our city attorney. This is an update on the foundation created by the Human Services Commission, which is the Maplewood Community Growth Fund. On December sixth, the Articles of Incorporation for the Maplewood Community Growth Fund were filed with the Missouri Secretary of State. Um the next step is that the Board of Directors will need to be appointed by the City Council and the Human Services Commission. Um I will work with the mayor and council to schedule this work session in early twenty twenty-three. We need to find a date that that makes sense, and uh I'll work to make that um happen. Once we know who the Board of Directors will be, they will be appointed by the Incorporator Melissa Powers from Lewis Rice. That can happen very quickly and immediately. Um the Board of Directors then will meet, appoint officers, and adopt the bylaws. I will encourage the board to meet as soon as possible. Um but they will meet, appoint officers, and adopt the bylaws. Once that takes place, the five oh one C three application can be filed by Lewis Rice within several days. Typically, this is a form called the ten twenty-three E Z, and that's that's what's filed. Um so currently, uh it takes about a month for the application to be assigned to an I R S specialist for the review of that five oh one C three application, and then about three more months to hear back from the I R S on the approval. But here's the important thing. Um note that it's not necessary for the I R S to have approved the application for the foundation to begin its work. As the five oh one C three status will be retroactive to the date of formation. So once the Board of Directors are named and they meet to appoint officers and adopt bylaws, they can begin to conducting business. If that makes sense. So um we can move some of this on parallel tracks. Okay, so that's kind of the update on um on the foundation in the Maplewood Community Growth. So I'll keep that uh on track as we go into the 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 new year. But again, the next step is for the Board of Directors to be appointed by the council and the commission. Okay, um uh the next thing I just wanted to mention, and this was on the uh Fire Department's uh Facebook page, but I thought it was such a cool thing, I just wanted to mention it. Um this is about whistles for the fire department. You may have may have seen this. But the uh the school district worked with the Maplewood Fire Department to come up with a design for twenty-one whistles for the fire department. The technology multimedia class did all the work for the whistles. The class went through several designs with the final design being perfect for all the department members to use for water rescues. The student in charge of the build was seventh grader Zazzy Kaplan, who is also a Maplewood resident. The whistles will be attached to all the personal flotation devices the fire department has currently and issued to all the Swiftwater texts in the department, eleven total. The whistles will be very helpful with the uh next flooding event, as the water can be very loud, and it's hard to get people's attention. The whistles will be a life-saving tool that the fire department will use will use in the future. So how cool is that, you know, if it didn't? So I wanted to highlight that by a seventh grader, Zazzy Kaplan. Okay, um just uh two more items I've got. Uh as I mentioned, uh this is the last time I'll bring this up. Uh the Maplewood Police Department kicked off its third annual uh warm clothing drive on November fourteenth, and it goes through January second. Uh so we have uh uh about twenty more days. Items can be new or gently used, such as coats, hats, gloves, scarves, blankets, and socks. All sizes are needed, and drop-off location is in the lobby of the police department. So that's the clothing drive. And uh I too just wanted to uh mention, it's the last council meeting of the year. Uh it's been a wonderful and productive year, and good things are happening in Maplewood and on the horizon. So thanks to the mayor and council for your partnership, and happy holidays to everyone.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, item number twenty-nine.
Public comment.
At this time, uh anyone in the chambers is welcome to step to the podium and make a public comment. You're joining us via Zoom. Please raise your Zoom hand, and Mr. Reese will call upon you.
Okay, welcome, Ms. Bryant.
Hi.
Hi.
We can hear you.
Okay, perfect. Um my name is Ashley Bryant, and I am the Director of the Maplewood Public Library. And I just wanted to pop in for a moment to thank you all uh for the resolution uh that you made tonight uh regarding the Secretary of State's rule. Um it is awesome and wonderful to be in a community that values the freedom to read, um that trusts librarians, um and that opens the doors for anyone to read what they want and for parents to make those um decisions for their own children um and not make those decisions for other people's children. Um so I would like to just mirror what Mayor Knapper said about if you have not read the rule yet, I recommend uh doing so, and you have until December fifteenth uh to comment. And again, I just wanted to say thank you. Um I think that the statement makes a big impact. So, thanks.
Thank you.
Ms. On?
Yeah, you have to keep pressing it. They make you work.
Oh, okay. Well, I can I can keep pushing a button. Um my name is Nancy Schick, and I'm a member of the Sustainability Commission, or anyway, um and it was my very great fortune, good fortune, to be able to go through the recent Citizens Academy. I want to thank all of you for making that possible. It was awesome. In in one word, I learned an incredible amount, and thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Well, no more, no more hands, Joan, ma'am.
Right, thank you. May I have a motion to hold a closed session?
Motion to hold a closed session to discuss matters relating to real estate and personnel.
Second. Any discussion? Madam Clerk, roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Page?
Yes.
Councilmember Phillips?
Yes.
Councilmember Crossley?
Yes.
Councilmember Homa?
Yes.
Mayor Knapper?
Yes. All right, thank you. So we are going to go into closed session. Those joining us on Zoom, we will not return. Those joining us in chambers, we will return, but I don't think you want to wait. So have a good night, y'all. Merry Merry Christmas, Happy Queens, uh Happy Hanukkah, Happy New Year.